Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you all. If I could entertain a motion to approve the agenda. There's a motion and... There's a motion.
A second.
And a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on, we have number four. Do we have any resident comments and/or questions? Two shoes, anything you... You're not a resident, are you? Don't count. Reports? We have none. Cindy, you want to report on anything? No public hearings. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Just a point of order, do you want me to repeat who makes the motion and who makes the second? Okay, I will... That's fine, I'll do it. That was Monroe. You're welcome.
No, that was for the agenda.
For the agenda.
Yeah, to prove the agenda, that was me.
To prove the agenda.
Yeah, that was... I'm sorry, that was me, Cindy Monroe.
Councilmember Monroe, seconded by Councilmember Mock. Henry.
Henry.
We're just going to go right in. I'm glad I asked! Hey, here we go. So, the consent agenda, there's a motion and a second. Did we vote on that yet? There's a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. That motion carries. This is by the book. We have no unfinished business. We have new business, 9.1, contract for police services. Mr. Merrick.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Actually, before I get into the police services agreement, I wanted to share a story. I got a call from Assistant Fire Chief Callie Trimble late this afternoon that there was a call regarding a construction worker in the city who cut himself. And apparently Deputy Lassard was one of the first on the scene, was able to apply a tourniquet. Otherwise, the construction worker would have likely died on the scene. So, next time you see Larry...
Larry hurt his pinky, and he's out for a month. And this guy, and he saved a life. That is outstanding.
Saved a life. Pretty cool story.
That is awesome.
Good job, Larry.
You know, just out of curiosity too, could you please just add that Larry, if I remember correctly, Larry's been named our deputy for the next year?
Correct.
That's awesome. All right, so moving back to you.
Yep, so in your packet, there's a contract for police services with the city and the Carver County Sheriff's Office for 2018. It mirrors our existing contract, which provides 40 hours a week for the town cop model, which is that daytime model from relatively 8:00 to 4:30 that can adjust periodically, as well as, excuse me, a .65 full-time position for evening coverage, which is split between Lake Town Township. There's also some community service officer hours in there. The increase represents 3.7% over 2017 for a total of $196,221. You'll also notice a change from the overtime rate of pay from 5921 to 6417. Commander Paul Cheeto with the Carver County Sheriff's Office is also available tonight to answer any questions that the council might have. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for his commanderness? More easy.
Anything changed besides the price?
No, not really. We did work with City Manager Merrick to work on the work plan a little bit. We didn't change it a whole lot necessarily. We tweaked it, the city work plan, and one of the things that we're going to concentrate on, again, is the downtown area, the stop signs, they're certain, and then, of course, the school area. And that's being done already as we speak with Deputy Lassard. And we're going to... Part of that work plan calls for quarterly meetings with either myself and the city or the sergeant, and just to make sure we stay on the same track, the same eyeball-to-eyeball meetings every once in a while, so we can keep track of each other. Otherwise, nothing has changed in the contract. The CSO time, you'll be getting a refund back again this year on that. Our CSOs, Community Service Officers, generally are folks that want to be cops, but they aren't quite hired as cops yet, so they come on board, and it's a revolving door. We get a CSO or a couple, three of them on board, and they get jobs either with us or with another agency, and they're gone. And so, we generally have, like right now, we're down two part-time CSOs. So, rest assured that the duties that need to get done do get done, that the CSOs would normally do, but your hourly contract, you're going to end up getting a bit of a refund on The overtime rate, that was at 5917, I think, is what the original rate was, and it had been there for like three or four years. And quite honestly, I forgot to look at it for a couple of years.
Like, I forgot to do a couple more.
You don't have a lot of overtime here, so that's a blessing, but it is caught up now, and it took quite a jump. But that's why that happened. I appreciate, I really do appreciate, we appreciate the contract here, and especially that night deputy, splitting that with Lake Town Township. I met with Lake Town Board a couple of weeks ago, and they were very appreciative too. It works well with them, it works well with us here in Carver, and it definitely makes a difference having that night deputy here. Friday night or Saturday, I think it was Friday night, it might have been Saturday night. We had a couple of other deputies that weren't assigned here. We worked kind of a special project in town, just trying to get a lid on the open containers in the street, and so, we're working on that. You know, if you've got a special project like that, we'll bring in other deputies. We don't charge the city for that, it's just something that we do to kind of augment what we already have here. That's about all I have.
Does anybody have anything, questions, comments?
Just a comment, there was a nice presence on Friday night. It was noticed.
Okay, good.
On Friday night?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah. I don't understand.
Okay.
Just a Friday night?
Yeah, but there was a nice police presence.
Okay. I just want to point out too that the relationship that we have with the Sheriff's Department is a good one and a longstanding one. We had a couple of hiccups this year in terms of communication, and I just want to reiterate from the council standpoint, or at least my standpoint, that, you know, we are a manager-type city now, and Brent runs and has the affiliation with you guys, and that his process, and I would love to see more input from Brent on where we go. I love having Larry back. I love that we got here. The process getting back to Larry is a little bit iffy, and I just want to make sure that we keep that on board. I want to make sure that I mention that publicly.
Yeah, and that's something that Brent and I have talked about a number of times.
Good. All right.
Thank you, Commander.
Yes.
Thank you. Yep, thank you, guys.
Entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we enter into a contract for police services with Carver County Sheriff's Office as presented in our packet.
I'll second that.
That's Cindy Monroe.
Yeah, there's a motion by Councilmember Monroe and a second by Councilmember Henry. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Another year.
Thank you, Mr. Merrick, Council.
Outstanding.
Thank you.
All right, let's move forward to 920 redevelopment grant application. Hey, Mary, how are you?
I'm great, how are you guys doing tonight?
Outstanding. 9.2.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Boy, time flies. I feel like I was just here last month to go through this with you at the council workshop. So, tonight, we're going to talk about the site investigation costs for the senior living project at 926th Street. Like I said, if you recall, we discussed this process at the September workshop, and this application for the deed grant is one of the next steps in the process towards getting an application in and getting the site prepared for development. So, tonight, I'm going to start by talking about where we've been with this site for the people that may be watching or reviewing the council meeting, and then, we'll go through some site investigation terms and kind of talk through the testing that's already been completed, and then, wrap up by talking about the grant and the resolution that is before you this evening. So, I have the clicker here, let's see if it works. Great. So, as you know, the site is located at 926th Street West. In December 2015, the city purchased the property, and in May 2017, the city selected Shingo B Builders to develop the site as a senior living facility. Since purchasing the property in December 2015, the city has been working with the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency to understand how contaminants on the site will need to be remediated, and has undergone, or has performed several tests to address those, address what contaminants are on-site. So, they are requesting a few additional items, and we'll go through kind of what has already been done and what they are requesting that we do in the next couple of slides. And then, we'll talk about what we'll need to complete before site work can begin. So, let's first kind of go through what the site investigation terms are, so we all know what we're talking about as we move through this process. So, the grant that we're talking about tonight is for the investigation stage of remediating a site. When we remediate a site, we typically do two types of reports. They're called an environmental phase one and an environmental phase two. The environmental phase one looks at the historical activities on the property. It's typically the first step in a due diligence process. It is a report that's prepared for the real estate buyer, developer, or local government, and in this case, this was done when you purchased the property originally in December 2015. This report, the purpose of this report is to identify potential or existing contamination on the site. And then, the phase two portion, the environmental phase two, is when you sample and test the potential contaminants on the site. So, this is a focused sampling plan. It includes multiple field methods, and then, this plan is submitted to the MPCA for the voluntary cleanup program for review and approval. The third document that we'll be talking about tonight and looking at for reimbursement costs or for grants is the RAP, which is the Response Action, stands for Response Action Plan, and this is the proposed strategy for how the site will be cleaned. And this is needed to manage or mitigate contaminated soil or groundwater, gas issues. It is, also identifies active remediation systems and plans related to construction. It looks like we have spent too long on this slide here. Oh, okay. All right. So, as I mentioned, in 2014 and 2015, you had an environmental phase one done and an environmental phase two completed by Braun. In 2016, we did a review of petroleum-specific contaminants on-site, and we did receive petro funds for this. The environmental phase one and environmental phase two identified that there may be petroleum-related contaminants on-site. So, in August 2016, we had a limited site investigation completed, and upon review of that limited site investigation, the MPCA requested additional investigation of several items noted in the phase one and phase two investigations. Specifically, they asked for removal of the hydraulic hoist in the bus garage, so that nearby soils could be tested. They also noted that there was additional review of some soil staining on-site, and that we would also need to test for the non-petroleum contaminants in the soil. So, the kind of next steps for the city is to update the phase two to review those non-petroleum-related contaminants in the soil, and then, prepare the Response Action Plan and enroll in the MPCA monitoring programs. So, to help offset those costs of doing that additional testing, we are going to, or why we're here tonight, in fact, is to ask Deed to help us offset our costs for those additional tests. The grant that we're applying for is the Site Investigation Grant. Deed has two types of grants. One is the Site Investigation Grant, and the other is the Contamination Cleanup Grant. And luckily, we feel that the Site Investigation Grant, right now, is a really good fit for the type of project that we have. The site that we have, this grant can cover sites that are both privately and publicly-owned sites, sites that have known or suspected contamination, and a site that has a development plan that will, development plan that will create jobs, increase your tax base, or result in other public benefits, and we feel that our project is a strong candidate for all of those. Yep. So, as a part of this grant, we are requesting $19,775 to complete the additional items for the phase two, and then, also to prepare a Response Action Plan. And that's, those are the items, the outstanding items that are eligible for this grant. So, what the resolution asks you to, or what we're asking you to vote on for the resolution this evening, is the requirements of the grant. So, we're asking for that $19,700 or so dollars, but the city must match at least 25% of the total investigation costs, and at least 12% of that money must come from unrestricted funds. So, the resolution before you this evening, it basically acknowledges that the city has an obligation to match these costs, and also assigns authorizing contract signatures, and this is, the language in the resolution is from Deed, and so, it's required, the resolutions are required by Deed in order to have a complete application, and that application is due on November 1st, 2017. If we are lucky enough, and I shouldn't say if, when we are lucky enough to receive this grant, we must spend the grant funds within the grant term, and if we are, if we, for some reason, are not lucky enough to get the funds, we do have the opportunity to reapply for a contamination cleanup grant in May, and if we are successful in receiving funds for that grant, we can retroactively apply, ask for funds that will cover the cost of site investigation at that time.
Can we use the funds if we decide to move forward on our own? Can we use the funds retroactively?
If the city pays for the cost.
Or the developer, or whoever.
Yes, in that May cycle. We can't do that for just the site investigation cleanup costs, but we have to have the Response Action Plan. The only requirement for that contamination cleanup grant is that we have to have a Response Action Plan in place.
Got it.
So...
Okay.
We should know about eight weeks after the application is submitted whether or not we received, we were successful in our grant application.
Good.
So, staff's recommendation is that we approve the resolution related to, relating to the Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development Contamination and Response Action Plan Development Grant. The next steps in this process, we kind of went through a timeline at the council workshop in September. We are hoping that the applicant will submit an application in December, and if they can't do that by December, then we'll push for January. So, we are working with them to make sure that they stay on track, and in the meantime, as soon as November 1st, as soon as we hit that November 1st deadline, we can work with Braun or whoever we select to do that work, to start those additional tests, so...
This is the first step in a number of steps.
In a number of steps, exactly, exactly. So, there's the recommendation, and I will sit for questions.
Does anyone have any questions or comments at this point?
I have a question.
Please, Ms. Monroe.
The application, and in the rules, it says that Deed has funding for up to $50,000 or 25% of the cost of it. Does that mean like for our $19,000 or almost $20,000, we only are going to get 25% of that?
No, we have to match 25%.
I mean, I'm sorry, we'll get 75% of that because in the...
Oh, I see.
Yes.
Because in the application, it says, what are the total investigation and RAP development costs, and it says $19,775, and then, it says, how much are you requesting from Deed, and it says $19,775. Shouldn't it be 75% of that, $19,775?
I believe you are correct, Councilmember.
So, is this, I mean, this hasn't gone in yet, right?
Right, but we will be requesting the $19,000.
Because of that $19,000, 25% is our match?
Yes.
Right.
Oh, I...
It's a total...
But it says, how much are you requesting from Deed?
Well, we are requesting that, yeah, I think Mayor Webb is correct in that...
I'm sorry?
Yeah, you're correct. Yes, yeah, we're requesting that.
Well, I mean, it says that it can't exceed $50,000 or 75% of the total cost. We say the total cost is $19,775.
I can see your point. Let me follow up with you after the meeting. I will, I'll follow up with Deed person, or the Deed representative, but I believe that that's correct, that we ask for that full amount, and then, we receive 75% of the costs, and we match the 25%.
I think that's because they use that towards their grant monies and how they determine what they've put forward. So, the total grant would be $19,000, of which we were a 25% match?
Cindy, I see what you're saying, because that, it doesn't make sense to me that they're the same number, so...
Yeah.
Okay.
We've made that, you're aware of where we're going.
Okay, so, but actually, what we're expecting to get is 75% of the $19,775.
Exactly, yes, sorry, that could be clearer, yep.
I did have just a couple of the questions. Approximately, what's the ballpark, what we've spent on investigating that site? I mean, you said that we had, in 2016, we had a petro funds grant.
I'd have to get that number back to you, but I can get that. We're tracking all the project costs from acquisition to soft cost to environmental, so I can get a report and provide it to the council.
Okay. Because I think besides the petro funds grant, we didn't have any other grants. Okay. All right, that's all I had, thanks.
Brent, do you have the 25% matching funds, a source for that?
Yeah, the city council authorized a transfer from the water fund to basically fund these projects. Now, the, there'll be costs that we're undertaking now, that'll be, they're proposed to be reimbursed should the council approve a tax increment financing district for the project, that those costs can be reimbursed through the district. And so, we'll be able to sort kind of the end, or the final funding, once the TIF application and the process and the approval becomes more clear. But to your initial question, yes, we have a source of funds.
Thank you. Anyone have any other questions or comments? I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 144-17 relating to the Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development, Deed, Contamination Investigation and Response Action Plan.
RAP?
Yes. Development Grant Application for 926th Street.
Motion by Councilmember Mock.
I'll second that.
Second by Councilmember Henry. There's a motion and a second. Any further comments, questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Ms. Nash, the Deetzel annexation.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Before you tonight is a, basically, a new orderly annexation agreement that covers just one parcel.
And an interesting one, by the way.
An interesting one?
No monies.
No money attached to it. So, this was negotiated between the attorneys and, for both the city and the township, as well as Mr. Merrick, and the purpose is to be able to annex this one property. It's approximately three-quarters of an acre with a failing septic system that's along County Road 11. Mr. Deetzel is here this evening and has been working hard on this project for several years now, so he's appreciative of the city's efforts to help him out with this request. Connection to both city water and sewer will be required once the annexation is completed, and...
But that's ultimately what he wants.
It is. It is.
Will he be paying the hookup fees then?
Yes.
He doesn't want that. It's part of, cost of doing business. It's either that or a new septic, right?
So, I'm happy to answer any questions you have, but basically, it is a different agreement than the one that your main agreement is, and it's for the purpose of not having that taxation reimbursement clause, which we think then will allow this one to be approved.
And I just want to point out that on the document, it's signed by the town board chair, which I assume that the town board all voted on?
They did.
Was it unanimous?
I wasn't at the meeting, and I didn't...
Just out of curiosity, because I just want to make sure that we're not starting a hornet's nest with saying, okay, the fees to the township and the tax, taxation reimbursement. It's all right here, but I just want to make sure we're not starting on...
Yeah, I know that they reviewed it at their August meeting, and then, we had some issues with just getting the legal descriptions and stuff prepared that took it...
I welcome it, I think it's great, I just want to be sure.
Yeah, they did approve it.
Good. All right, does it... I apologize.
I have nothing else.
All right. Does anyone have any comments, questions?
I'm just curious what the timeline is for this.
You mean, once we send it to the state?
Yeah.
Unfortunately, we don't know. They have, the administrative law judge has about 60 days...
Voted yes and voted no.
Well, has about 60 days or so to review it. Typically, in the past, say, over two years ago, we would get these kind of resolutions back in about a week.
Yeah.
So, I'm hopeful that that'll be the case here.
Hopefully, our relationship with the administrative law judge hasn't been hampered. Are you comfortable with all the process, and you're good with it?
No.
Good. Right on. So, you're aware of everything, we're good? Right on.
I have a question, and it's a little bit unrelated. So, the property next to it, are they, are they hooked into city water and sewer, or is this the first on this line that's beginning?
So, there are two properties south of this property and also on the west side of 11, I believe, I don't have those files with, I believe one of them is hooked up to both city water and sewer, and one is hooked up to sewer and not water.
Okay. That was just out of curiosity.
Any other comments, questions? I would gladly entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. Cindy Monroe will make a motion to adopt Resolution 145-17, approving an orderly annexation agreement.
Motion by Councilmember Monroe.
I'll second.
Motion, second by Councilmember Johnson. There's a motion and a second. Any other comments, questions, concerns? Everything okay back there, brother? Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Welcome aboard.
Welcome to Carver, Dan.
All right. City Council Communications. Monroe.
I don't think I have anything besides, besides being upset with contractor.
Let's talk about that.
Should we talk about that for a second?
You frustrated with the process of the contractor?
A little bit, and I think people who are living in it are, I'm talking about the street reconstruction, so it's not just any contractors.
Yeah, all contractors.
Yeah, and I would just hope that, you know, they would clean up their sites when they're done for the day, and not leave brush at the end of alleys, and not wreck little trees, and not do something about it, and so, I think, I think going forward, maybe we investigate our contractors a little more thoroughly.
I would add that I think maybe we investigate our own process as well, in terms of what we build into the contract and what's acceptable and what's not.
That's fine, too.
It may change how they're bid, and it might be more expensive, we might not have as many bidders, but I think it's something that we need to talk and investigate moving forward.
Well, and then, I would just say to any of our residents, if you're having issues, please, please call us, we'll, we'll help you, we'll take care of it, and that this project will be done eventually. project will be done eventually.
Anything else?
Nah, I think that's it.
Thanks for that. Johnson?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Mock?
We had an HPC meeting last week, and there was a garage door approval, and then there was a possible rebuild of a garage that was brought before the HPC, so we had a meeting, went well. And then also, I just wanted to mention, I went down to Riverside Park on Saturday for the Jeep show, which is their fundraiser for epilepsy, and it was great. Part of the park is underwater, but there were...
It was underwater?
Part of the park was underwater, because it's, it's high from the marsh right now, but there were so many people in Jeeps down there, it was really fun. I went down and helped out the lions for a little bit, and I just, I think it was a really great event, and it was too bad that it rained a little bit later in the afternoon, but it was really fun, and I thought everything went really well, and people were having a good time. Cool.
Anything else, Mock?
No, thank you.
Hank?
Yeah, we had a Parks Commission meeting, went over a little bit about the scope of the Parkmaster Plan, and short meeting. Other than that, got nothing.
Mr. Merrick?
You want to give them an update on community leaders?
Ah, yes. We did have a, well, I was getting to me, I was letting these things. We did meet, we had a community, community leaders meeting at New Carver Elementary. It was interesting, we've been doing this for, hungry? We've been doing this for quite a long time, and it was interesting, we finally got our new school and one representative from Chanhasse and none from Chaska, one from Victoria, and three or four from the school district. I was a little disappointed in the showing, but we went through the, had a really, really in-depth tour of the facility, which I thought was great, we've all done that. And then we went through comprehensive planning, really what's going on, and updates throughout the four communities that make up our school district. I thought it went well for the limited number of people that were there. That's all I have. Anything for you, Merrick? Mr. Boiam, do you have something?
I was just going to check on, and maybe it was in the packet, an open house, is that coming up tomorrow?
Oh, Jonathan Carver Parkway Open House for the Transportation Study tomorrow at Carver Elementary. Yeah, tomorrow at six-thirty. Please let your input be known, I think we're looking at some pretty major changes on Jonathan Carver Parkway. The north-south corridor is bound to change quite a bit, so. Tomorrow, Jonathan Carver Parkway Transportation Study, six-thirty, Carver Elementary. Anything else? Entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Johnson.
I'll second that.
As Councilmember Henry eventually. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. You're a peach.